I call this the May 28th, 2019, meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Dr. John Hathcock. Dr. Hathcock is the minister at the First Baptist Church here in Fayetteville. Our pledge allegiance tonight will be given by Ethan Floyd. Ethan just completed the first grade. He loves all animals, especially his chickens. He plays soccer and basketball. In any spare time, he likes to write and illustrate books. He's the son of Tabitha and Kevin Floyd. At this time, if you would please stand, remain standing for our pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the glorious day you've given us today. Most importantly, Father, thank you for giving us your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, who showed us what a perfect life looks like. May we ever strive to live out such an attribute and virtues that we see in the character of Christ? Father, I know that you are sovereign and you control all things. And I know that you controlled who would be in place today in the service of this county. So Father, thank you for orchestrating their pathways to be in this room for the purpose of what bids you're bidding and doing well they are. I pray that you would bless them, strengthen them, give them the courage to stand for what's right and what's noble and what's pure. And Father, I pray that it would ultimately bring you glory and joy. I pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, John, and thank you, Ethan. At this time, if you would electronically answer the roll call. Madam Clark?
I have eighteen commissioners present, six absent.
No announcements at this time for me. I would entertain a motion for approval of last month's commission minutes. Commissioner Bradford makes that motion, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Any questions, changes? All those in favor of approving them as printed that were in your packet, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimously approved. You should have received seven quarterly commission committee minutes in your packet and eighteen monthly ones. Any questions on any of those? Okay. Our next item, Dr. Heath is on the original agenda, but he's going to be reporting every other month. So he will be here at our June meeting for a building update. The next item is consideration for approval of the resolution honoring the memory of the late Elizabeth Capshaw, former clerk and master of Lincoln County. It's Sims.
This is a resolution honoring the memory of the late Elizabeth Betty F. Capshaw, former clerk and master of Lincoln County. Whereas on April 17, 2019, the many friends and associates of Elizabeth Betty F. Capshaw were saddened to learn of her death at the age of eighty-four. Whereas Ms. Capshaw was born on September 26, 1934, in Bellevue, Davidson County, Tennessee, to the late Ruthless Bryant and Nanny Maug Loggins Faraby. Whereas Ms. Capshaw received her education from Bellevue High School in Bellevue, Tennessee. Whereas Ms. Capshaw started working at the Lincoln County Circuit Court Clerk and clerk and master's offices on October 1, 1963, initially as a part-time employee for both the Circuit Court Clerk and the clerk and master, which later became a full-time position. Whereas Ms. Capshaw became clerk and master on May 1, 1999, and retired from this position on April 29, 2005. Whereas Ms. Capshaw worked in the clerk and master's office for almost forty-two years, and she loved her job and all the people that she came into contact with each day. Whereas Ms. Capshaw worked under Chancellors John Templeton, Ty Cobb, Tamara Smith, and J.B. Cox. And whereas Ms. Capshaw was a faithful member of the Wells Hill Church of Christ for over sixty years, where she was very involved in teaching Bible classes, and she taught her children and grandchildren the love of God and the importance of putting Him first. Whereas Ms. Capshaw devoted her life to taking care of her family. She loved working in the yard, working crossword puzzles, and babysitting her grandchildren. And her favorite trips were to the Smoky Mountains and going to Emerald Isle with the extended family members. Whereas Ms. Capshaw was married to Howard Haston Capshaw for fifty-nine years until his death. They had four children, Sandra Arnold of Fayetteville, Linda Sisk of Fayetteville, Robert Capshaw of Lynchburg, and Williams Capshaw of Cornersville. And grandchildren, Robert Arnold III, Melissa Maddox, Ginger Lowe, Heather Stewart, Kristen Deloach, Austin Capshaw, Summer Capshaw, and Kaya Capshaw, and seven great-grandchildren. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Lincoln County Commission do hereby wish and desire to express to the family of Ms. Capshaw our sincere condolences and sympathy and to express to them as well as her many friends and associates our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and distinguished service rendered to Lincoln County and this community by Ms. Capshaw. And be it further resolved that this resolution of respect and esteem be spread upon the minutes of the commission and that a copy thereof be forwarded to her children this twenty-nine day of May, 2019, signed by William R. Newman, Mayor, Phyllis Capps, County Clerk.
What's the will of the commission? Mr. Douglas makes that motion, seconded by Ms. Dangerfield. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you for sharing her with the county and her service to the county, and we sure appreciate it, and thank y'all. Thank you, Ed. Next item, our 2020 census update. Mr. Chris Conklin will come forward now at this time and explain some of the things as it relates to next year's census. We may need to repair, Chris, the microphone there.
Glad that happened before I got up here so I didn't get charged for it. As you know, we have the 2020 census just around the corner. We've had a lot of work to do over the last year and a half to prepare, actually over the last ten years, and we are moving forward with the actual taking of the census. Got this one? Alright, I got it here. Alright, so the goal for the 2020 census is to count everybody once, make sure we count them only one time, and ensure that we count them in the right place. We also want to make sure that we conduct the 2020 census in the same manner as the 2010 census, which was very successful. And we want to be able to copy the positives and learn from the negatives, and I think we are doing just that. In 2020, we're doing a number of new things. For the very first time, you have the opportunity to go online and complete your census either by your smartphone, on tablet, computer. So we are offering that option. We think that's going to be very beneficial and help us with our response rates. We're also getting rid of all paper applications for employees, and we're going to talk about employment in just a couple minutes. As you know, you may know, the census is mandated in the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, and it has some significant financial impacts on communities like yours. More than $675 billion comes into the state, to the state, in federal grants and federal funding each year. So we have some studies that show that this is about $1,091 per person that does not complete a census. That's what it costs the local state and some of the local governments for not, for one person. So if you extrapolate that out by one percent, you're looking at roughly $70 million per year that the state could miss out for every, every one percent that does not complete the census. It also helps with planning. You all are sitting here today to plan better for your community. This is, census data is a great opportunity to make sure we, you have accurate data in front of you to look at trends and to be able to identify what your community is going to need. And also, it's the gold standard in regards to statistical data. So every, every grant that is written, that data comes from census data. So we're trying to collect that data in 2020, and it's something that we all use. I know that this community uses grants for different projects. So again, another opportunity for you to better prepare and to have the data that you need when that time comes. So here's some of the programs that we have, we use census data for. I guarantee if you look at this list up here, there's somebody in your family or in your community, maybe a friend or a neighbor, that utilizes one of these programs. Census data drives federal funding for every one of these programs in the state of Tennessee, and much less, we know it drives for the federal program and federal funding here in Lincoln County. So it's incumbent that we take the census seriously and that we increase our response rates. And that's what we're here to ask you in Lincoln County to do. Help us with the Census Bureau to increase the self-response rates by your constituents. We have a number of challenges in the 2020 census. Just looking at this diagram right here, you can tell, I guarantee each one of you pick up your phone on a daily basis, you're inundated with information, advertisements, news stories, just a ton of information comes at you. In the census, we have to be able to work through that. And that's one of the challenges that we have in communities like Lincoln County, is to be able to get the information out and make sure that the information is accurate and helps us with some of the challenges, with other challenges we have, such as distrust in government. That's another challenge that we run into. So we're coming to you today, or I'm coming to you today, to ask for your assistance. The Census Bureau and all of its information that's collected is confidential information. So as you complete your census form, none of that information, any personable, personal identifiable information that is collected is totally redacted and scrubbed from our system. We take an oath as Census employees, which is punishable if we break that oath, $250,000 and five years in prison. We take a lifetime oath. So that just goes to speak to the confidentiality of the information that we collect. So we currently are trying to engage communities like yours to help us get the information out to your friends and your neighbors. Over the past year and a half, the two years, we've been, we've been doing a lot of legwork. We were trying to figure out where to count people, and that's what we've been really doing up to this point. We've done that through our LUCA process, which means the Local Update of Census Addresses. That basically is combining, gathering information for a national address database, because we are counting population at addresses, not the individual people. That's how we determine where to send census forms. So we've done that, working with local governments. So we're in the, at the point right now where we are motivating people to respond. We're educating people, and we're trying to encourage them that until when April 1st comes around of 2020, and they receive their form or their invitation to go online and to complete their census, that, one, they know what to do, they know how to do it, and they know that it's safe and confidential. As we move through April into the June 2020 timeframe, that's going to be our self-response timeframe. That's where we, as a community, our communities across the state, encourage people to go, take it upon themselves to complete it. Self-response is the key. If, if we do not have the community self-responding, that means we have to send employees door to door. And, one, that's expensive, and, two, that's annoying for the people that live in those houses. So we want to make sure that we have the opportunity and encourage people to self-respond. As we move through our June timeframe, we will also then go into our non-response follow-up. And that's where people who do not self-respond are contacted by a federal employee or a census employee to collect that data and for them to complete their census. And we will then tabulate our responses, and we will provide a report to the President's desk by December 31 of 2020, that President Trump will have some heavy reading to do that night. I don't know how much partying on New Year's Eve here we'll be doing. The Tennessee area of operations are split into four areas. Currently, we are, have one area census office, or ACO, that is in Shelbyville, Tennessee. Shelbyville currently conducts all operations, not only for the state of Tennessee, but also Western Kentucky. That office opened in January, and we will be opening three more offices, one in Knoxville, one in Memphis, and one in Williamson County, our Nashville area, later on in the summer, early fall. Then operations will shift to that. But your county will maintain its operations out of the Shelbyville office. This is the key here. If you look at this, this graphic up here, if you look at the blue sections on the state, of the state, that indicates low-response areas. We know, based on our data that we collect on the American Community Survey monthly, plus our decennial census results from 2010, that these areas that are shaded in blue, and the darker the color, the worse response rate we get, self-response. We see some areas where up to almost 58% of the population does not self-respond. That takes a lot of resources to go out and collect that data. If you look where we're at here in Lincoln County, there's a couple areas in this county that, that can use little work. Mostly the census tracts that we have here, about six, I think, in total, six to eight in total, there's two tracts that exceed a 20% threshold that we look at for concern. Those census tracts fall right around the Fayetteville area. So we do have a little bit of work to do. We have some census tracts, the other census tracts range between 13 and 18% of a non-response rate or self-response rate. So there, again, there are some opportunities here. So what I'm here today is to propose to Lincoln County, to the leaders here, is that we can establish a Complete Count Committee for Lincoln County. This committee is chaired by the highest elected official, which is Mayor Newman. I've had the opportunity to speak with him a few weeks back. But this committee is influencers and leaders in your community that come to the table and help us devise a plan to be able to get information out about the importance of the census and help people respond. It's, it's a lot of public relations, it's a lot of media, it's a lot of just dispelling the myths about the census, and really, again, driving home the point of how important the census is to your community today and moving forward. You're probably thinking, well, 2020 is six months away or so, and why are we doing this now? Well, we found that with a proactive Complete Count Committee in a community, that we see increased self-response rates. More importantly, you all are the voice of your communities. You all have been elected for a reason, people trust you, and people have you do their bidding here at the commission meetings. But you also know the pulse of the community. You know how to motivate people. Obviously, you're sitting in these chairs because you motivated people to vote for you. So that's what we're looking for, is your committee to be established here in Lincoln County to help us understand Lincoln County better and how we can complete this mission So what would you be doing over the next six to 10 months? Educating people. Right now, we are moving through the education phase, where we are going across every community, every city, every county, elected official, we're talking to them, educating them on the benefits of the census, encouraging, encouraging them to educate their constituents. And that's where we're at right now. As we move through April, well, we're in April of 2019, but we're going to start promoting the census a lot more heavily. You'll see a national advertising campaign come out. I've recently met with Governor Lee's office, they're, they're on board with the State Complete Count Commission. So you're going to be able to create synergy on a state level as well and the local community. And we are going to increase partnerships. We need partnerships at the local level. Again, those community organizations that are out doing the good work in your community that know the people, that are friends and family members, they can help us spread that word. And they also have the ability to, to reach out on a much larger level in Lincoln County than we would out of Philadelphia. So as we go through February of 2020, we're going to start really motivating people. That's when our census starts to take off. April 1 of 2020 is census day. It's just a good rule of thumb of where you live at that point in time is where you're going to be counted. But we're going to be motivating people, and hopefully the education we do over the next six months or so will help encourage them to complete their census at that time. This is just a quick timeline of our operations. We're going to start an operation very soon. In August of this year, we were doing our address canvassing. We need employees for that, which we're hiring right now. We have to hire about 500,000 people across the country. It's the largest peacetime operation that the federal government conducts every 10 years. So we're going to be needing local talent and employees from Lincoln County to do this. So we will be doing that, and we need to make, make the community aware. As you see, census employees out and about in the community, they're going to be standing there with electronic devices, and I'm pretty sure you're going to get phone calls saying that there's some stranger out in front of my house taking a picture. Well, what they're actually going to be doing is geocoding that address to make sure that, one, it exists, and it's in the right place, because, you know, we are the government, we don't get everything right all the time. So we're going to be making sure that we know where to count people. As we move through the end of the year, we're going to start our group quarters, where we go through and to assisted living homes, we go to jails, we go to college campuses, and make sure we have a count, working an administrative count with that, those organizations. And then April 1, obviously, is census day. That's when we're going to be really encouraging the community to take part in the census. Our self, our internet self-response will be going through that time, where you can go online, complete your census, and then we will do our non-response follow-up after that. So this is a very key point. We want, we need applicants also. We need people to do the work. In Middle Tennessee, through the Shelbyville Area Census Office, we're looking at about 2,000 people that we're going to employ over the next year. Of course, that 2,000 takes into account attrition rates and people who come and go, but it is a good opportunity to do work. Our pay scale is roughly, it starts at $14 an hour for enumerators and address canvassers. It is work at home, which means you will be in the field working, but you do not have to report anywhere. You can pick your own hours. It's, it's a very good part-time job to have, and we also have full-time employment that's available as well. So again, this is our ACO pay rate. We're right, we just bumped this right around that $14 an hour rate. So if you know of anybody that's looking for a job, please have them go on to 2020census.gov/jobs and, and apply for that position. We are going to be hiring over the next month. We'll start seeing some of our new team members come on board at that point. So what have we done, what we've done so far with partnership in the state of Tennessee? Well, we've done a lot. I'm the lead partnership specialist in the state, so we have a, a team of about 14 people right now that, that are working in communities. Over the next few days, that, that we will be bringing on about seven more partnership specialists to work in communities. So up to this point, we've contacted 90 of 95 counties. We are actively working in those counties. We currently, again, have 12 partnership specialists, that should be 14, my apology. And that slide is outdated as well. But we have completed, complete count committees, and established complete count committees, I should say, in about 38 counties. We have another 22 that are coming on board and another that have scheduled their training, and we have 11 more that have agreed to come on board but have not yet identified their training. So there's a good opportunity for Lincoln County to, to help complete a census, make sure it's complete and accurate. And we, you can see, we've already done a lot of work across the state, so we want Lincoln County to be on board with this. Alright, with that, do you have any questions about the census?
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Conklin at this time?
Great crowd.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Tell me when we're ready. Next item, consideration for approval to reappoint Vicki Hamilton and Sandy Bradford to the Buffalo River Regional Board. That term would expire June of 2022. What's the will of the commission on this item?
No approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Ogilvy makes a motion. Mr. Young seconds it. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of those two being approved, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to appoint Jason Parks to the Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities. That term would expire June of 2022. Danny Walker, who served that position, declined to take another term. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Graham seconds. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item, John Jackson, you should have received his resignation letter. I would like a, a motion to accept that resignation from the commission because he's moving outside the district.
Mr. Chairman, I move with approval.
Mr. Ogilvy makes a motion. I need a second. Mr. Dangerfield seconds it. Any questions about this? Motion for resignation to be approved. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. That position, the plans are it will be filled next month at a regular commission meeting. The reason we did not fill at this time, our public notices were not timely on what's required by law to fulfill that. So that will be done next month. Correct me, Attorney Sims, let me make sure. They can send in a request that they be nominated, they can appear next month at the meeting, or they can tell a commissioner. But it requires a commissioner to nominate them, and if they are not here, it's required that they sign that they're willing to serve. Does that pretty much cover it? And can we swear them in at next month's meeting after they are elected by this body? Okay. And they would serve until the general election of August 6, 2020. So a little over a year, they would be serving what this commission or the person, at that time, they can rerun, or anyone else in that district that qualifies could run also at that time. So they would serve until August of next year. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay, Lauren Honey, we're ready for our Main Street report. And welcome. I think this is your first report to this body, is it not?
It is.
Well, welcome to the position, and welcome to the Lincoln County Commission. We look forward to working with you for a long time.
Thank you so much. Thank y'all so much for having me this afternoon. I'm really excited to kind of get involved and jump in and, and work with all of you. So just a little bit of report on Main Street. We just wrapped up our fifth annual Slaw Burger Festival. It was another successful year, even with the smaller crowd due to the weather. Just, but overall, it seemed like a great turnout under those circumstances. And the people that did come seemed like they had a blast, so that was good. The vendors and merchants seemed very pleased. So just a special thanks to everyone who had a part in making the day great, and special thanks to all of our sponsors, vendors, participants, and volunteers. We're already starting to plan next year's Slaw Burger Festival, which will be Saturday, April 18. We just wrapped up our 2018-2019 team board. We had 10 students that were represented from, represented from all three high schools. We had a very successful year. We, the recipient of the Fayetteville Main Street Scholarship was Sarah Pinkes. She is from Lincoln County High School. She, the scholarship was issued to the student with the most amount of points, and those points are earned through volunteer hours, not just with main street. points are earned through volunteer hours, not just with Main Street, but with the community in general. And a big thanks to Drianne Newton. She was the representative from our executive board, and she helped out a lot with the Team Board this year. The 2019 Fayetteville's First Friday Series just started May 3rd and will continue through October. They are held on the first Friday of each month from roughly between 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the square. Each First Friday, the stores are encouraged to stay open later for those after-hours shoppers. All of the vendors that attended were really pleased with their sales and are excited to return, and we've got a lot of vendors for this next First Friday, which will be June 7th. There is not a vendor fee, so if you know of anybody, please tell them to come on out. It's on a first-come, first-served basis. The event is strictly just to encourage people to come and enjoy our beautiful downtown area and, of course, to shop and eat local. There were boxes that were placed in all of the Fayetteville Main Street's member businesses that had extended hours, and customers had the opportunity to sign up for a chance to win a $50 gift certificate to be used at any Main Street businesses. No purchase was necessary. This opportunity will be available throughout all of the First Fridays, so make sure you visit downtown on those First Fridays and join in on the fun. Again, our next First Friday is June 7th. We have the Farm-to-Table Committee already planning, and we're working hard for our third annual Farm-to-Table event. Tickets already went on sale. They went on sale May 18th, and they're actually already sold out, so we're excited for another successful year with that. It will be at the Howell Community Center this year. And then we're also already starting the Host of Christmas Pass planning. We, it will be November 8th, 9th, and 10th. But just on behalf of Fayetteville Main Street, we really appreciate all that you do and continue to do to help us, and I look forward to working with y'all.
Any questions for Ms. Honee? Thank you. Next item, Budget Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee Meeting Report for the May 28, 2019 Regular Session of the Board of Commissioners. The Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met present at due notice in the Courthouse Basement Courtroom on April 18th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Members present were Steve Graham, Shirley Dangerfield, Doug Cunningham, Grady Ravis, Kate Ewing, Randy Bradford, Ricky Bryant, and Donnie Ogilvy. No members were absent. Other present were county member, or county mayor, Bill Newman, Finance Director Cole Bradford, Commissioner Mark Mitchell, Commissioner Charles Hunter, and representatives from the attached departments. These are the departments that appeared on April 18th, 2019. Election Commission, Register of Deeds, Preservation of Records, Planning, Property Assessor, Reappraisal Program, Trustee, County Clerk, Data Processing, Circuit Court, Chantry Court, Juvenile Court, Fire Prevention and Control, Civil Defense, Health, Health Department, Ag Extension, Soil Conservation, Veteran Services, the County Commission, County Mayor, County Attorney, County Buildings, Finance and Accounting, General Sessions Court, Judicial Commissioners, Courtroom Security, Special Patrol, Sanitation Management, Miscellaneous, There being no further business, be presented, had a motion by Commissioner Bradford and seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed to adjourn. Then we had a meeting on May 7th, 2019. Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body, Lincoln County, Tennessee, met present at due notice, Courthouse Basement Courtroom on May 7th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. All members were present. Others present were county mayor, Bill Newman, Finance Director Cole Bradford, County Attorney Ed Sims, Commissioner David Sanders, Commissioner Steve Spray, Commissioner Ronald Jean, Commissioner Mark Mitchell, Commissioner Glenn Douglas, Commissioner Charles Hunter, Director of Schools, Bill Heath, School Technology Supervisor Brad Looney, Luna, Lucy Williams, with the Up Valley Tines and members of the Friends of Fayetteville Lincoln County Veterans. Sorry about that, Brad. Item 1A, Directors of Schools, Heath, presented the physical year 1920 Department of Education budget, which were approved by the Board of Education on May 6, 2019. B, School Technology Supervisor Luna presented the attached information for the lease of 1,450 Chromebooks for student devices. These devices are replacements for an existing lease that expires this summer. He noted, "This is not a request for new money since these laptop leases have been a regular budget item since 2013." We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, passed unanimously to concur with the Board of Education's recommendation and recommend approval of the attached three-year lease agreements for devices with HP Finance for the device of central technologies for the warranty management license.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion. Mr. Mitchell seconds it. Any questions or discussions on this item? Not new money. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
Item 2, County Mayor Newman presented the attached $125 whole sponsorship request from the Chamber of Commerce and the $150 sponsorship request from the Host of Christmas Pass. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, passed seven yes, one no, to recommend approval of the two sponsorships requests referenced above.
What's the will of the commission? Mr. Young makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds it. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
Item 3, Representatives from the Friends of the Fayetteville Lincoln County Veterans presented the attached one-time funding request. This request has been included in the physical year 1920 enhancement request and will be considered during the budget process. This is an information item at this time. Item 4, Solid Waste Committee Chairman Cunningham presented the committee's attached recommendation for the recycling center's request for proposal for the RFP. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham and seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed unanimously to concur with the Solid Waste Committee's recommendation and recommend approval of awarding the RFP to Richardson Waste Solutions in the amount of $7,000 per month, with one half being paid by the county and one half being paid by the city of Fayetteville effective July of the 1st, 2019, in accordance with the RFP specifications and contract.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Ravis makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Ashley. Any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
Item 5, Financial Management Committee Chairman Newman presented the committee's recommendation regarding the Lincoln Health Systems properties. The committee concurred with the Lincoln Health Systems Board recommendation of selling the three properties, Lincoln Care Center, Amana Avenue property, and the old EMS property at the Lincoln Care, Lincoln Care Center, and the former hospice and home health property on Wilson Parkway, by adding subject to the Attorney General's approval, as recommended by County Attorney Sims due to the Public Benefits, Hospital Sales, and Convallences Act of 2006. A lengthy discussion was held about the Lincoln Health Systems Board recommendation of four yes, two no to sell the Patrick Rehab to wellness and wellness to the city of Fayetteville. No action was taken on this item. We had a motion by Commissioner Ogilvy, seconded by Commissioner Ravis, passed six yes, two no, to concur with the Financial Management Committee's recommendation of selling the three properties, Lincoln Care Center, Amana Avenue property, old EMS property at the Lincoln Care Center, and the former hospice and home health property on Wilson Parkway, subject to the Attorney General's approval.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Taylor makes a motion. Commissioner Thorpe seconds it. Any questions on this item? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Commissioner Bryant, if a negative vote, anyone else wants to be recorded as voting against this item. Please let that be recorded, Madam Clerk. Motion passes. Commissioner Ogilvy.
Item 6, Finance Director Bradford presented the following items. A, Collection of Delinquent Sewer Accounts Update and Recommendations. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, passed unanimously to concur with the Finance Director's Bradford's recommendation and recommend approval of writing off all delinquent sewer accounts from the 204 Sewer Fund and pick the collections of these accounts up on the 101 General Fund, with any collection cost being paid from funds designated for sewer initiative. This action will allow the county to close or out the sewer fund completely by the June 30th, 2019.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion. Commissioner Ewing seconds it. Any questions or comments on this item before we vote? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
B, Sourcewell National Purchasing Cooperative Agreement, formerly NJPA, is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham and seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached Sourcewell National Purchase Cooperative Agreement.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bryant makes a motion, seconded, I'm sorry, I didn't get who seconded. Commissioner Bradford. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approving it, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
101 General Fund Budget Amendments are attached. Number 1, it's for $14,036, budget revenue and expenditures for the Governor's Foundation Healthier Tennessee Fund received by the July 2018, and rebudget $9,036 of Health Department access to health and healthy active built environment funds received in prior year. Number 2, $22,800 budget revenues and expenditures for state law enforcement salary supplements for deputies funded through the state of Tennessee. Number 3, $35,370 is line item budget revisions to reflect the current year estimates. Next is $54,674 to rebudget funds for the Lincoln County Courthouse building repairs and restoration Phase 1 and 2, project which was part of the assessment performed by Stephen Ward and Associates. The project started in fiscal year 17 and 18, but the county just made the final payment of $45,296 and retainage of $9,377.50 on 4/26/19. The delay on the final payment was due to issues with the railing on the west and east side of the project, on the west and east side, the project is now complete. Next is $4,750, an amendment to record revenues and budget expenditures from the sale of a 1983 Chevrolet 1-ton rescue truck on Gov's Deals, previously recommended by the Fire EMA Committee and approved by the commission to surplus. Next is amount of $5,000, an amendment to record revenues and contributions of the proceeds of a 1989 Ford F-350 rescue truck to the Boones Hill Fire Station, previously recommended by the Fire EMA Committee and approved by the commission to surplus. Had a motion by Commissioner Ravis, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached, I'm sorry, I got off on the wrong motion.
One above that.
Motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ravis, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 101 General Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Thorpe makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any question on any of these items? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
D, the 116 Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendments. As far as $60,000 to revise an original budget estimate to more recent estimates of current year revenues and expenditures. I think that's the only one. Had a motion by Commissioner Ravis, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 116 Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. Any questions on this item? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
E, 122 Sheriff Drug Fund Budget Amendment. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 122 Sheriff Drug Fund Budget Amendment and increase account number 12254150-19 by $5,000 and decrease 12239,000 by $5,000.
Mr. Bradford makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any questions on this item? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
F, 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendment. First one is for $386,959. First one is for $386,959 to budget revenues and expenditures for the Mooneham Road Bridge State Aid Program. State Aid Program pays 98% of the cost with a 2% local match. The local match was budgeted in account number 13168,00705. Number two is for $71,171,431, it's a line item transfer for new fueling system and other payroll line item budgeted adjustments within payroll line items. I believe that's all of them. We had a motion by Commissioner Revis, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 131 Highway Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Goethenberg makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogul.
G. 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Number one is for $7,730, an amendment needed to cover project lead the way training and travel. See request from Susan Welch, CTE Director. Number two is for $300, reflects the money received on a judgment against two juveniles because of vandalism at NGA. Number three is for $7,355.2, reflects donations received from the Bank of Lincoln County that will be used to purchase cameras and data system. See the request following from Brad Luna, Technology Supervisor. Next one's for $9,212, a budget to budget donor restricted donations for the following: $1,211.57 coaching supplement from the Lincoln County High School Tip Off Club, and additional $8,000 budgeted from any more Booster Club supplements that may be submitted in the month of June. Next one is for $950, reflection or reflects donations received from various businesses, clubs, and individuals providing t-shirts for this summer's Read to Be Ready Summer Had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ogul, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? I'm sorry. Commissioner Revis makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Hunter. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogul.
H. 143 Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendments. First one's for $20,688.90 to set up the Tennessee Department of Education approved budget for 2019 breakfast after the bail grant, to be implemented after August 1st, 2019, and before the end of 2019-20 school year. These funds can be used to purchase equipment and supplies that aim to increase access to school breakfast, no match required. Next one is for $106,589.34 to reflect the value of commodities. Had a motion by Commissioner Revis, seconded by Commissioner Ewen, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached 143 Central Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Bradford makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Ewen. Any questions on any of these items? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogul.
A. 171 and 178 Fund Budget Amendments for school bond issues. First one's for $31,988,26.90. Counties previously didn't have to do budget amendments for capital projects that didn't have dedicated annual revenue sources such as the school building program. I would recently recommend the counties begin doing budget interest for these funds also. Total bond proceeds of $31,988,26.90 were deposited in the 171 Fund. County schools portion of the $23,388,811.09 was contributions out of the 171 Fund and deposited into the 178 Fund below, which is where the county building program expenditures will be dispersed. The city schools portion of $8,599,215.81 was contributed out of the 171 Fund directly to the city of Fayetteville. Next one was the 178 Fund Capital Projects Number One, which was for $23,388,811.09. Had a motion by Commissioner Ogul, seconded by Commissioner Revis, and passed unanimously recommend approval of the attached 171 and 178 Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Sander makes a motion. Mr. Taylor seconds. Any question on this one? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogul.
J. USDA Building Update is attached. It's an information item. K. Property Tax Year 2018 Increases/Decreases Corrections Report is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ogul, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the attached Property Tax Year 2018 Increase/Decrease Corrections Report per Assessor's Office with transactions processed by the Trustee's Office.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Taylor makes a motion. Mr. Ewen seconds for approval of the corrections list. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approving this list, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogul.
L. The financial reports are enclosed. Had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to acknowledge receipt of the financial or enclosed financial reports.
Would entertain a motion, acknowledge the acceptance of those reports or receipt of those reports, excuse me. Commissioner Taylor makes that motion. Commissioner Dangerfield seconds it. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of acknowledging receipt of those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogul.
Finance Director Bradford noted that the committee is scheduled to approve the draft budget on Thursday, May 9. Assessor of Property Brayden is finalizing the reappraisal. The county will not receive the certified rate until the process is finalized. If the certified rate is not received soon enough before this meeting incorporated into the documents, then this committee might have to recess until the following week for draft budget approval. The information item. There being no further business to be presented, the motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed to adjourn.
Well, Commissioner Ogul's looking at if anyone in the audience or television audience too, why so many budget amendments? It's near the last of our budget year, and a lot of those are just line items changing for what they need to spend monies on that they may have run out in other...no new monies were involved in any of those items. They're simply adjustments in our budget to make everything coordinate. Commissioner Ogul.
Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met for some due notice in Courthouse Basement Courtroom on May 9, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. I think I got the right one up. Do I? Okay. All the members were present. Others present were County Mayor Bill Newman, Finance Director Cole Bradford, Commissioner Steve Sprague, Commissioner Mark Mitchell, Commissioner Charles Hunter, Sheriff Murray Blackwelder, Lieutenant Jeff Bradford, and Lucy Williams with the Elk Valley Times. Item one. Finance Director Bradford informed the committee that the county still hasn't received the certified tax rate from the state. This information is needed for the draft budget. Mr. Bradford recommended recessing this meeting until Thursday, May 16, 2019, in anticipation of receiving the certified tax rate next week. Item two. The committee had a lengthy discussion about the Lincoln Health Systems. Had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of Lincoln County hiring an independent healthcare consultant working directly for the county commission to perform a comprehensive operational, financial, and strategic assessment of the Lincoln Health Systems, and develop plans and recommendations to approve or to improve the financial and operational performance for long-term sustainability. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewen, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to appoint an ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Anthony Taylor, Commissioner Ricky Bryant, Commissioner Doug Cunningham, Director of Schools Bill Heath, Finance Director Cole Bradford, for the purpose of evaluating and selecting an independent healthcare consultant as outlined in the previous motion, and providing any assistance as needed through the process.
Okay, we've got two motions there. The first one is that the committee or the...I guess it's the Budget Committee helping me out on that would be looking at hiring a independent consultant and reporting directly back to the county commission. Commissioner Bryant makes a motion. Commissioner Taylor seconds it. Any questions on this item? One comment on it. The hospital has applied for an assessment that would be funded by the state through a federal grant. When that would come about, I don't know, but it might be something that that committee wants to look at rather than jumping in it real quick. But any other comments or questions on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I'm not out of order, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Do I need to go to the microphone?
No, sir.
Well...
Can everybody hear? Commissioner Ogul.
My comments are...I know all of you probably already know that since I was on the commission and starting in 1978, there hadn't been any monies provided by the Lincoln County Commission for the running of the health systems. It's always been self-sufficient. Healthcare has really taken a beating over the last four or five years, to say the least, in the fact that our reimbursements for care that we render to our citizens has been substantially reduced. And we've been trying to deal with this problem for the last five or six years in really a significant way. And during those times, we've had about three different changes in our CEO and our CFO. We did that because we were trying to cut costs. I don't think in a couple of those instances that we did cut costs. In fact, we enhanced our spending, especially with one of our CEOs. We're still trying to recuperate from that. We had...we signed a contract, and it took a little while to get out of that contract with that particular CEO. So during that time, it cost us a lot of money. But after we finally did get rid of that CEO, we hired our CEO, our present CEO, and we felt like we needed to give administration just a little time to adjust and get up on what they were trying or what they needed to do in order to get us back on a good footing. We have worked diligently with administration, trying to work that out. We've worked with doctors. We've done everything we could think of to get it back on the right foot. As Bill Newman has expressed, we have applied for this grant for a consulting firm that would be provided by the state of Tennessee, and that would be in the form of a grant that could possibly save Lincoln County $30,000 to $50,000 if we give that time to work. I don't know if it will work or not. I just don't know. But I hate to spend $30,000 to $50,000 until...we don't even know for sure we're going to get the grant, but then probably in the next 30 days or so, we will know. But I would like to see us defer action on appointing this committee, and I have no problem appointing the committee or who the appointees are. I think it's a good thing. I think it's something that we're going to have to definitely do if we can't get it under control. But I think the Health Systems Committee is working on some things that possibly could help get us back where we need to be. And I don't know that for sure. There's no way of knowing. Healthcare is just a...it's a tough road to hold right now. And we've been trying to make it work. But if I would suggest, or I would like to make a motion that we defer action on this for 30 days and just see if this will work. If it don't, then I'm ready to move forward with it.
Okay, is a motion to defer acceptable this time, or we need a motion to table? In order, okay. I need a second on the motion to defer action on these two items. Mr. Martinez makes that. The motion that has been properly seconded is to defer action on these two items, that they hire a consultant and appoint an ad hoc committee. It would be deferred to a later meeting. Do you want to define the next meeting?
I said the next 30 days. I don't know that that...
So that would be defer it to the June meeting.
To the June meeting, just to see if we could acquire that grant. If we can't, well then, we need to move forward.
Is this debatable? Motion to defer?
Yes.
Okay. The floor is open, open for discussion. Does everybody understand what the motion and second is? We would be deferring action on these two items until the June meeting to give the hospital hopefully time if they knew they were going to be getting the grant and any proposal they're doing far as action from the board and administration. I recognize Commissioner Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we deferred action about as long as we can defer action. We've deferred action for the past three years. I sit on the budget committee and I know it's a tough time in healthcare. I realize that, and I've been talking to a lot of people that work there, that have worked there, trying to do my homework. But the fact of the matter is, for the last three years, it's really not anybody's fault sitting here. Just, I know it's some bad times, but we've been given some pretty bad numbers. If the hospital had to pay back what it owed the nursing home today, it owed what, sixteen million dollars and change. Patrick is, you know, we talked, there was some talk about settling. Fact of the matter is, one side might not make as much money as it could, but it makes about a half million dollars a year. And, you know, these entities are keeping our healthcare system propped up at this particular point. The other fact is, in my opinion, and I may be wrong, I've just done what I can do here lately, but we've got about six months of running money with that hospital and we could be completely broke. The reason I made this particular motion was not to offend anybody, or, you know, the people especially that sit on that committee. It was that this, with these people, if we hire these people and can find somebody, they will work directly for us. There's no influence from any outside persons. They work for the county commission and the county commission only. I don't know that, I know the ramifications or what the qualifications are, that's not the right word. I don't know that I know how this state audit would work. I think if we hire our own person, then we can have that audit done any way we like, and that can be a comprehensive audit of not only the financials, but maybe hiring practices, maybe a personnel audit, all those things could be involved in that. And I just don't know what the state's audit would involve. And I hate to spend money worse than anybody in the world, but if you were at this meeting, we talked about that at length, in that we just don't have time to wait anymore. We're out of time, and that's what I'd like to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me make a point. The funding is from the state. It is an independent organization that does, and somebody else on the board may be, I recognize Commissioner.
Yeah, the state is providing a grant and it's from an independent healthcare consultant out of Chicago, I believe. Navigant, I believe is the name of it. So it is an independent, and I believe they said a couple of weeks, we may know for certain. Is that right? It's pretty quick.
By when? Thirteenth. Okay.
Yeah. A lot of information has come out, five months, six months, that Ricky said, I don't think it's right, but that's the type of thing that we need to address. I think we need to go ahead and put together the request and proposal, find out exactly if you need it, and start sourcing some of the consultants. And if it appears that what the state is providing, can answer those particular questions that provide what we need, we've got a different avenue to go. But I think we need to move on. That's what I may, I agree, I agree with commissioner Taylor and commissioner Bryant. I think we, I don't have a problem with another one, and we may not even get that grant because, to be honest, there's a lot of health systems in the state that's in a lot worse shape than we are. So.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. One thing on timeline too, time this committee meets is going to be the thirteenth of June. That has to go before budget again. It's going to be July before we can approve any contract for any consulting firm anyway. So we're looking at July as far as you could hire anything done. So we can readdress it at that time. And I think everybody here wants the same thing. We're looking at maybe a few different views of how to get there, but the motion has been withdrawn, and who seconded that? Commissioner Martinez, you're okay with that? Okay. We're back with now, and I'll read, if it's okay, Commissioner Ogles, if I can read this first motion that was made in budget. That motion was made by commissioner Bryant, seconded by commissioner Cunningham, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of Lincoln County hiring an independent healthcare consultant working directly for the county commission to perform a comprehensive operational, financial, and strategic assessment of the Lincoln health system and develop plans and recommendations to improve the financial and operational performance for the long-term stability. What's the will of the commission on? Don't make me read that again, Commissioner.
You may read it again.
You're correct. We did a motion was by commissioner Bryant, seconded, okay, by commissioner Taylor. Okay, any questions or comments on this motion? Recognize commissioner Dangerfield.
That's what I was going to say when you just didn't let me talk right though. To me, it was a hot, can y'all hear me? It was a hot commodity to them the last time we met, that we, and we put these peoples in place. Now all of a sudden, some ice water been thrown on it. You don't, we don't know until we try. We just at a position, we don't know whether to go left or go right. But we need to try to see what we can do, and I don't know why we would be withdrawing.
We're not.
Why are you delaying?
We're not, we're not. The motion before the body at this time is for to move forward on a independent assessment of the health system.
I know, somebody just said, they said.
I withdrew my motion, so.
If you vote.
If he has withdrawn what I thought I heard, I can ride with that. But just, I don't know what, uh-uh, I can't ride with that part of it.
Okay.
But he withdrew it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Does everybody realize what we're voting on? A yes vote is to move forward on looking about an independent assessment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Now we're back to the ad hoc committee and those members. You want to read that again, Commissioner Ogles?
I will. We had a motion by commissioner Ewing, seconded by commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to appoint an ad hoc committee consisting of commissioner Anthony Taylor, commissioner Ricky Bryant, commissioner Doug Cunningham, director of schools Bill Heath, and finance director Cole Bradford, for the purpose of evaluating and selecting an independent healthcare consultant as outlined in the previous motion and provided any assistance as needed through the process.
Okay. What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Douglas makes that motion. That motion. Commissioner Spray seconds it. That may not have been a slip, I'm not for sure. Okay, now any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor of approving those people and what their task to do, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogles?
There being no further business to be presented, a motion by commissioner Cunningham, seconded by commissioner Bradford, and passed to recess until Thursday, May the sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. in the courthouse basement courtroom. Still not through. The budget committee of the county legislative body of Lincoln County, Tennessee reconvened from the May ninth, two thousand nineteen recess meeting in the courthouse basement courtroom on May the sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. All members were present with the exception of Randy Bradford, who was absent. Others present were county mayor Bill Newman, finance director Cole Bradford, commissioner Steve Spray, commissioner Charles Hunter, commissioner Tori Young, planning and zoning director Nancy Harris, Michelle Rutledge with the planning and zoning office, and Lucy Williams with Elk Valley Times. Item one, planning and zoning director Harris presented the attached request. Chairman Graham noted the committee would consider this request during the draft budget approval. Item two, finance director Bradford informed the committee that the property assessor Braden still has not received a certified tax rate from the state as of the close of business today. Therefore, the draft budget approval will have to be delayed until June due to not having the certified tax rate at this time. We had a motion by commissioner Cunningham, seconded by commissioner Revis, and passed seven yes, one absent, to approve the draft budget at the Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand nineteen regular budget meeting, with the draft budget being presented to the commission on June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, and published in the newspaper on June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen for a public hearing, and final budget recommendations at the July second, two thousand nineteen budget meeting.
What's the will of the commission on these dates and proposal? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Mitchell seconds. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogles?
There being no further business to be presented, a motion by commissioner Cunningham, seconded by commissioner Revis, and passed to adjourn. Respectfully submitted to the May, two thousand nineteen regular session of the county legislative body, Steve Graham, chairman, Donnie Ogles, secretary, and Cole Bradford, recording secretary. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good job, Commissioner Ogles. That's a lot of reading. Your job was bigger than mine tonight. Next item, the notary publics. Madam clerk.
J. Ray Thompson by commissioner Cunningham, Mary Carter by commissioner Bryant, Carol Miller by commissioner Cunningham, Melanie Reese by commissioner Spray, Phyllis F. Counts by commissioner Brown, and Kim Nichols by commissioner Thorpe.
Any additions we need to add to that list? I would entertain a motion at this time, they be approved. Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, seconded by commissioner Young. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? They are unanimously approved. We're ready to move into new business, and I recognize commissioner Sanders.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recognize Jennifer Taylor to speak, please.
Any objection from the commission for Jennifer Taylor to speak? Ms. Taylor, you've got five minutes to address the commission.
I've lived in this county for twenty-three years. I've lived out in the country. I've been raised in the country, and I know that I'm talking to farmers because this is a concern about some chicken houses that are moving into Taft, Tennessee. And I've been a real estate agent for five years, and I have never had success selling a property near chicken houses, even within a half mile. I have people that have Googled me before and said, I'm not going to look at the property because I see this chicken house next to the property. So not only will properties plummet with these chicken houses, by the way, it's on Old Railroad Bed Road, less than, about three-quarters of a mile from the Taft corner stop right there. So there's three churches there. Blanche School is one-point-three miles, the new one will be one-point-three miles from there. And the reason why, we had a meeting on Saturday, a lot of the community showed up just to discuss, and I have a small group here today representing us, and we also got a petition on Monday. I think we were maybe on the road half a day, and we got sixty-three signatures of people that are opposed to this chicken house, and it's Wiley Finley that is starting the chicken house. So not only will they, we've done a lot of research on it, not only will the, there's four chicken houses that will be maybe forty-five thousand birds per chicken house. That's going to increase our traffic, two-hundred-and-forty trucks per every six to seven weeks, we believe, large trucks. And I know I'm speaking to a farming community, and like I said, I'm from a farm as well, and I'm not opposed to people having their own business at all. We're opposed to the possible toxins that come out of there. We have proof here of a lot of people that have done research on it, that the toxins from the odors, as well as the toxins from the litter that they have to store outside, will cause problems with our health issues, that most of the people that work there and people within a half a mile there, it's proven to that they have had lung problems, gastrointestinal problems, and also cancer-causing carcinogens in the air. So these things, we're asking you to help us do what we can to stop this in our community. PBS has even had a show talking about the Chesapeake Bay's eastern shore, where the runoff from farms like this cause, they're unregulated for one, they cause so much pollution, and having a school close by there, as well as, I mean, chickens carry salmonella, E. coli, and all of this can be airborne. And not only is the litter bad, but it's the poisons that are put into the air that actually kill the aerosols, bio-aerosols, and I've got a big article about that. That's proven also to be very toxic. And even now, the pesticides that they give the chickens are extremely toxic. They are arsenic, actually. And we have a horse farm next door that is also, she has her own business as well, and she has thirty horses there and gives riding lessons, and she has fundraisers for St. Jude's Hospital. We have other small, local people there that do not want to be here. I mean, it is so close to the town of our small community, and we're just a small, small community, and we do not want this staining or really what we're enjoying, the reason why we moved here in the first place. And not only that, four chicken houses, there's going to be eight chicken houses before long, and we're talking, I guess, you know, lots of people that are very against this. So we want to know if you will do something or be able to do something to help us maybe stop this, or ask Mr. Finley to stop and cease and desist building this, these chicken houses, or what can we do as far as stopping this? We know that, we have also found that Tyson, it is a Tyson chicken plant, and it is a broiler plant. We believe, that's what we've heard, and, you know, we may seek litigation if, we would like to ask for your help first before we go any further.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Taylor?
They have broken ground on it, and we've seen Tyson trucks come and go from there.
Any one else?
One more thing, actually, is that I actually got on poultry.com, and they recommend that the people that do things like this would talk to the community a little bit and also do a little bit of health hazard research, and none of that has been done. But the neighbor did walk up to him and ask him if he was building chicken houses, and he said yes, and she asked how many, and he said four. And we think that we've heard that they were broilers. Any other questions?
Any questions?
And if anybody would like to look at, I mean, Kansas City, they don't build lagoons. There's also watersheds, like there's the limestone creek right behind where this is going to be as well, so the runoff will go there and possibly affect Madison County, limestone county, and Lincoln County.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think your group has contacted planning and zoning, and they've kind of given you directions. At this time, there are no restrictions in our planning and zoning guidelines to prohibit this. There has been at times, public opinion that has stopped, you know, construction of some of these. of these, but there's not anything legally as the county that we can do at the present time. It may be something we want to address in the future, but this time, I don't think there's anything we can do. Is Nancy here today? Okay. We appreciate you, with your expression of the opinion for the neighborhood there, and if there's things in the future developed, we'll let you know, but you may have to resolve this outside of the county's jurisdiction far as restrictions.
Well, we do ask you as a county, because we know, we are hearing about the hospital, and we would want you to consider the growth in the community. I know when I bought my acreage, I had to sign something to say that I wasn't going to build a chicken coop or a hog farm there, so I think that definitely needs to be considered, because there's definitely some health repercussions from chicken farming and airborne diseases. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other new business to be brought before the commission at this time? Commissioner Dangerfield is recognized.
I got a question I want to ask pertaining to the library about water supply. The friends, I think I'm right about it, the friends of the library, whoever been doing the beautification of the library on the outside, the flowers, the grass, and all of that, they cannot get water. They said they not go haul water from the basement, and they was talking about a faucet on the outside, but somehow or another, that doesn't work. That faucet is not producing water for them to do the lawn and all of that, you know, and they not doing it. So I wonder where do we go from here, because it would be bad to see the flowers, the grass, and the beautiful kitchen, how hard they have worked to keep that lawn for all those years, and now they can't get water. You know, a faucet on the outside where they could put a hose on it, you know, and do like you do at home.
Have they had a plumber look at that?
Tell you the truth, Mr. Newman, I think they have, but I don't want to stand wrong with this. You need somebody to look at it and have some, that they's got some know-how.
Well, can we have, we okay to get somebody to look at that, Cole?
Are you?
We can contact somebody on the behalf of the library, but Cole's saying he thought that's a library board issue.
It is a library board issue.
Okay.
But I'm asking you, who could solve the issue?
I can send Ricky Bryant up there to take a look at it.
Ricky don't want to go.
I can give you a name, who caused it, Mr. Chairman. I'll give you a name.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, there are certain restrictions with irrigation systems for water, what would be the ideal situation? I know it costs a little money, but the property can make a new path. I bet people make a new path, and where the irrigation system should have plenty of water. There's, I know there's five on the corner there, and I'm assuming it's six or eight is main out there, so they should.
Okay.
I think the problem is the water that's been supplied, and that pressure.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else under new business this time? Commissioner Bryant, first, Commissioner Bryant, second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. We adjourn.